Greetings folks and welcome to today's show. We've been discussing for some weeks now, the election season is on us. Election date is actually the 1st of August, which is coming up pretty quick. We've had our show that today is going to be on school board candidates. There are two positions and four candidates, so you're gonna have to make a choice. And I've been trying to have two candidates per show. Excuse me. I was unable to get these two candidates on at the same time. So we're splitting it and having one of them on and the other on. And then in the back room, we're gonna put those two together. So as far as you're concerned, there will be one show. So, and our candidate today is Ms. Jessica Fogarty.
Hello Tom.
Jessica, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
Giving us the time. And let's, let's launch off here. Give the folks a little brief synopsis of your, of your background, your education, your qualifications, whatever you think.
Okay, absolutely. I'm a University of Memphis graduate. I graduated with a degree in history. And then I went on to get my masters in my teaching license at the same time and received my masters in teaching in the year 2005. The numbers are hard for me to remember. But then I went into the teaching profession and I taught for two years in the state of Tennessee. And then I taught at a private school in Louisville, Kentucky. And then I finished with two more years of experience in the state of Oklahoma. And I taught everything from first grade all the way up to eighth grade. I taught, one of the schools was a performing arts school. So I was able to teach drama and I had wonderful teaching experiences. And we relocated to Tennessee. My husband and I are both Tennessee natives. And we came to Tallahassee six years ago. And we've been enjoying this community ever since.
Let's, let's talk a little bit about what it takes to be an effective member of the school board in your position. It's a very complicated system. School systems are complicated. The board jobs are complicated. I think the most complicated of all the elected posts. So what sort of characteristic do you think you bring to the table that's gonna serve you well in that, in that role?
Okay, well absolutely I agree with you about, it's a huge responsibility. It's a huge responsibility to be on the Tallahassee school board. And it would be an honor to get to be a member of it. As far as my particular strong points, I feel that my experiences in the classroom will help me to identify well with what teachers have gone through or are going through currently. I feel that that experience is invaluable to me understanding just how students, you know, interact in our educational process. And I feel like I'm just gonna have, you know, a wealth of information I can bring to the table just from that, that viewpoint. And obviously, just in the past year or two, I've actually become a parent. I'm on the other side of the table with regard to education because our oldest daughter will now be in first grade at Robert E. Lee School. And then our youngest daughter will be a kindergartner. So I feel that as a, as a mom, I now have a totally unique perspective to what I expect from my school system, what I'd like to see happen in the schools.
Well, you're gonna have seven members and they'll all come into the table with something different. What are you gonna do with that?
That's true. Well, I think that for lack of better words, I get along well with others. I've served on the preschool board for my daughter's preschool for, I think, a little over two years. And it was a great experience. And there were at least seven or eight different women on that board. And I feel like we all had really different strong points and characteristics and personalities. And I feel like every chance that I, every meeting was an opportunity for me to listen to others, to bring my experiences to the table, but then to kind of collaborate and to synthesize my ideas with other people's ideas and to actually make a stronger, you know, positive outcome as a result. I feel that, you know, collaboration, when it's done effectively, can be incredible. And so I hope that that experience will really help me to, you know, to work well with the people on the board if, if I'm elected. And like I said, I understand that the magnitude is different. I understand that the school system is much larger than just a preschool setting. But I feel like that just that experience of working with others and working well with others will lend itself positively in my favor.
All right. Well, what would you, what do you consider as gonna be your, in going on the board? What is your, what is your goal? What is your ambition for the school system?
Well, I'd like to see Tallahassee schools stay in, in the top rankings of the state as far as, as far as just school systems. Because like I said, I'm a Tennessee native. I'm actually, I graduated from Columbia Central High School. And I've always known about the Tallahassee schools. I've always known them to be, you know, just really exceptional school system. And I've, I've always admired and respected that, that they were well-known in the state. And so we, we relocated to this area. That was a major priority for my husband and I. And just a real big selling point for Tallahassee was that the city school system was so phenomenal. And, and that's what I'd like to see continue, is great quality education. And for other families to be able to look at Tallahassee when they're considering, you know, moving to the area. And I'd like for them to feel confident and secure that, okay, those are some great public, that's a great public school system. And that's one that we'd want our children involved in.
Well, I guess since, since you've got two that are just starting, you would be interested in, in having the system stay on the top for quite a few years.
Absolutely. And also, Tom, I plan on, we've, we've kinda dug, dug our heels into the community per se, like, this is where we're gonna spend our lives. And so it's really important for me to see Tallahassee flourish. And, you know, I really care a lot about Tallahassee. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see it, you know, just be the beautiful, unique, wonderful community that it is. And I wanna keep it in that, in that place. And so it's important to me to serve on the board. Because I feel like I need to give my time and talents in that area and help out the best I can. And do what I can to help keep Tallahassee the great town that it is.
You're always, there's been a lot of flux in the, in the school business in recent years, federal, state, and, and local. It's all sort of been in a turmoil for years. And so you're always being asked to change, make changes to the program. You're being asked, and of course, those changes never come with money. So essentially, you're being asked to do more with less. How you gonna handle that?
Well, luckily, I won't have to handle it by myself, cuz I will be serving on a board with other members. So I would obviously take the expertise and the advice and bring with it the information that I can learn as well. I know that, you know, I can research as far as looking at other school districts who have implemented maybe some programs that we're considering and see how they've done it. And if they've done it well and successfully and how they did it on a, you know, on a, on a, you know, with a budget, you know, a decline in their budget. And, you know, use those examples. I feel that if you can brainstorm together, you know, and if you can reach out into the community and get community involvement, community support, get some advice from community leaders, other people who have maybe gone through similar transitions and done those successfully, to look to them for some, for some help and guidance. And, you know, as far as reaching out to your teachers and getting some advice from them, they're in the classroom, they're on the front lines. I feel like they have a really good understanding and grasp on what's happening and what can maybe be tweaked or improved. I know that, you know, when, when I had direct questions in my classroom, I could definitely answer someone and tell them what I needed or what I didn't feel like I needed and what was essential. And I feel that as long as we keep quality as our focus and just, you know, maintain quality, but yeah, look to make the correct investments, wise investments to maintain success and quality, I think that, you know, the board can be successful.
Let's talk about teachers. You've been there. You are one, so you're gonna have an immediate identification, I'm sure. There's a lot of talk about making the, the standards for entering the profession tougher. To some extent, even being suggested that they, that you, you set the standard that would allow somebody to go into, into the teaching program to begin with, at the college level. So tougher standards. And then of course, the big question is, how do you, how do you go about measuring all that? But that's, that's a big subject these days. How, how does that grab you? What do you wanna do with it?
Well, I like the, the idea of having high expectations for the people that wanna enter the educational programs. I think that high expectations across the board are, are good in life. I think you should set your goals high. I believe that, that you want to attract the brightest and most creative and energetic people that you can find into the educational profession. I feel that that's important because teachers are just the direct link to our students. And they are gonna create these great atmospheres, these, you know, just really positive atmospheres to our students. But obviously, we want our teachers to be really well-prepared. So I think that it's important for educational programs, universities, colleges, to look at their process and make sure that, yes, that their, that their goals, their expectations or their standards are, are definitely set at a, at a level that would encourage the best and the brightest to go into the profession. And that we would hopefully respect the, you know, the teaching profession so that we can, so we can keep those bright minds in the classroom. I feel that it's, it's, it's good to look at who you're encouraging to come into the classroom. And it's also a really good thing to look at what you can do to keep them in the classroom. I think that that's really important, that you want teachers to actually be very, you want them to, to be happy in their teaching profession so that they'll stay in that profession.
If not happy, at least proud, huh?
That's right.
One of the other topics that's getting a lot of news these days, and it's, it's coming to pass, I think, to some degree, that'll be the question. But that is, teacher pay, including performance as part of the evaluation, performance, which means something, whatever the students are successful at, I guess. How do you feel about that? Pay being tied to performance?
I feel like that's probably a sticky question. I feel that from a teacher standpoint, I would hope that, that it would not be solely focused on testing as far as for my students, as far as the rewards that they have received throughout the year from the instruction I've given them. I would hope that people would look at a more comprehensive package. I would, I would hope that people would consider testing to be a component of my overall success as a teacher. But I would be far more concerned with my students as far as, you know, surveying parents, surveying or asking my students or, you know, with concern to their achievements that they do outside of my classroom even. I feel that, that there are a lot of other issues that go into rating a teacher. And, and so I would, I would consider that if this is truly going to come to pass, that we would hopefully take that with a, a good approach and, and put that as just one component.
Okay. Well, guess what, folks? We're gonna run out of time. You have been meeting Ms. Jessica Fogarty today, who had solicited your vote for the Tallahassee school board. And so thank you very much for joining us. And thank you, folks. And we will see you later.
The highest standard of trust offers a sense of safety and comfort. It's established over time. You know when you see it. You know when you feel it. There's a standard of trust in healthcare. It's the Joint Commission Gold Seal of Approval. In 2003, Life Care Center of Tallahassee voluntarily achieved this accreditation and maintains it still today. Life Care, meeting a higher standard, because residents matter most.
Hello everyone. I'm Renee Keen, and I'm running for alderman. I want to serve the citizens of Tallahassee while promoting quality education, economic growth, and while staying engaged in our community's needs. I want to be your voice of reason for the next three years. I'm Renee Keen, and I would appreciate your vote on August the 1st. Thank you.
Let the Smokehouse be your mountain getaway destination in beautiful Mont Eagle, Tennessee. Enjoy our cabins, restaurant, and old general store. Shopthesmokehouse.com featuring homemade barbecue sauces, jellies, and many other fine Tennessee products. Our live music on the mountain series features some of the best local and Nashville talent every Friday and Saturday night, 6:30 PM. No cover, kids welcome.
We're back, folks. And we want to cover the, the second of our candidates for the Tallahassee school board. Earlier, we had talked to Jessica. And we now have Teresa Lawson. She is finishing a term on the school board and is running again. So thanks for taking time to join us and share your views. And tell the folks a little about yourself, whatever you wanna share.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad to be, be able to, to be here with you. My name is Teresa Lawson. I am a lifelong resident of Tallahassee, along with my husband Chuck. Chuck and, and I have two children, Lindsay and Chase. They are graduates of Tallahassee High School. As Chuck and I are also graduates of Tallahassee High School. Our parents were graduates of Tallahassee High School. So we're a multi-generational family and very vested in this community and school system. I were, we have, we also have three grandchildren, twin boys, Paxton and Parker, and baby Maddox.
You did start early.
Yes, yes. So we are a full family and, and, and love our community. And like I said, we have a vested interest in this community and our school system. And my educational background is, of course, I graduated from Tallahassee High School, class of 1980. Very proud of that. I have an associate's degree in elementary education, a bachelor's degree in management and human relations, and a master's degree in marriage and family therapy from Travecque University. And now pursuing my advanced certificate in rehabilitation counseling at San Diego State University.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what are you, what are you doing with this now?
Well, I am a, the manager of the Tennessee Rehabilitation Center in Shelbyville. And I am pursuing that advanced certificate to go along with, with what I do to help me in, at my job. And prior to that, I have also worked for the Department of Children's Services. And also, I've been employed by the Tallahassee City School System. So I have always been an advocate for children and education and, and will continue to be. It's been very exciting last four years. And I feel like my professional and educational background gives me a really unique perspective as a, as a board member.
Well, tell us a little bit about, what, what do you think are your own personal characteristics that make you an effective board member?
Well, as a therapist or the psychology background, I feel like that my listening skills, I feel like that, that's probably as far as what I bring. I'm, I'm a very, very active listener. I like to watch, I like to listen and observe. And, and you can learn a lot by just, by listening. And, and that's actually the first year that's I just sat back and kinda watched and learned, observed and learned. But I'm up to speed now. And, you know, I really, and really enjoy it. Like I said, I think my, my professional background too is, is a, gives, gives me an advantage as well. While, while I know while, while I've been on the board, we've been a board of distinction each year. We have a, an excellent board. And we're all very engaged and, and I know I am. And very proactive and engaged on the school board. And we're very, like I said, we've been a very active board and involved.
Well, talk a little bit about, you know, how, how do you describe your, your goal for the school system? What is, what is you're looking for?
Well, when I ran last time, and it's the same this time, maintenance is, is priority for me. I feel like we have, and we've, we've come a long way with maintenance. We formed a maintenance committee. We've gotten cell phones for the maintenance workers. We've got, we've set a protocol in place that was not there. We are, we've really been working on maintenance due to the, the issues that we've had in the past. And especially with this economy and the way things are, and we have to watch our money, we've got to start being proactive instead of reactive.
Yeah, we, we still have a maintenance issue staring us in the face as we speak. The replacing a major part of the roof down at Tallahassee High.
Right. And, and you know, those, those repairs, they are expected. You know, any roof, any, any repairs in your home, but you have to plan for those expenses. You have to expand, plan for those expenditures. And that's where I think we need to, I think we need to really look at that and, and work on that. Planning for these expenditures instead of them becoming an urgent need. You know, that these, like a roof, whatever lifespan it has, you know that it's gonna be, it's gonna need replaced after a certain time. But until then, you repair. You have ongoing maintenance. You have a plan in place, like ceiling, the driveways and the pavements.
Of course, you can always put it off one more year. You, you have a constant challenge in that 85% or so of the school budget goes for, for salaries.
Right.
For your teachers and administrators. So, well, that gets us to the question of you are constantly being asked to do more with less. And I, I really feel for those in, in the school system, beginning with the board. Because of all of the flux and changes that keep being generated by Washington and Nashville and hardly gives you a chance to decide what you'd do for yourself, I guess. So tell us a little bit about how you approach those problems. How do you sort all that out and get as much as you can out of the money?
Well, of course, the money is earmarked for different, I mean, some of the money is earmarked for different projects or different funds or different. So you have to look at that and, and prioritize. And during the past four years, we have had capital projects. We've had, we have had a lot that we've had going on that, I mean, a lot of money. And now that we're, you know, we're, we had the East Lincoln School, we had the football stadium, we had the high school auditorium, you know, we had those, those major projects. And this, and we've discussed this with the economy. I mean, we're, we're going to have to look and really conserve and look at what we have and really ensure that we are properly maintaining our, that our buildings and our, and our, and our infrastructures. Where we're going to have to make sure that we're good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We're gonna have to look and see what we can do with, like you said, we've got to, what we can do with a little, a lot, what we, do a lot what we can do, but we've only got a small amount to work with. We've got to think outside the box. We've gotta look, it's just, it's difficult. It's difficult.
Do you have any responsibility on the board for, for getting funds to run the school system?
Do I have any, I'm sorry?
Any responsibility for getting funding to run the school system?
As far as like going out and actively seeking funds?
For example, well, yeah, or whatever, however, you'll take money anywhere you can get it. I know, for example, right now, one of the things they're facing and they, they really wanna do it and don't have the, the funds available, and that's the going to the electronic books.
Yes.
And the digital, going into the digital age. How do you feel about that?
Well, I think that's, I think that we have to keep up, we have to keep up with the world. And, and, and I am very pro e-textbook. But, you know, I mean, there are grants available we can look at. And then there are funding that, that we can, and that's where I think our administration needs to really take a good, hard look at, is where we can get the funds for this as far as grants and different, different fund, funding sources.
Yeah, I understand. You only need about $400,000 for starters to primarily buy equipment.
Right.
Now, once you can get it going, then it's, it's really gonna be, cost less than the current school board.
Certainly. And, and you know, these, these children that are coming along, I mean, they're growing up. I know my grandson, at, at two years old, could, could work an iPhone and an iPad better than I could. And I mean, that's the age that we're in. That's the world that we're in today. That's why we have to prepare our children. And, and we have to make those, those changes because, to engage them. And, and they're gonna be, children today are gonna be very bored with, with textbooks.
Yeah. They don't do that much reading anymore.
But it's just, like I said, it's just very, it's very challenging with, 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 financially, it's very, but, but we've got to look outside the box. We've got to, we've got to look at, at different sources. And I think that's where our administration needs to step in and really advocate and, and search for ways to, and bring that to the board. But at the same time, you know, it's, 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 it's a challenge. But, and we're, but as a board, we're still looking at that. We're still going forward with that. And as long as I'm on the board, I'm, I'm going to be very active with that.
Okay. Let's talk a little bit about the teachers. They, they're constantly under pressure, the, the, the changes that are going on constantly for the last several years, you know, we, everybody, once a week, somebody comes up with a plan to make the school system better. We're not satisfied with, with the current state. And that's a national issue, not, not just ours. So the teachers are, are really challenged to, to keep up with that. And also, they're talking about tougher standards to get into teaching. And we're also talking about having a performance increment in the, in the analysis for their pay. How do you talk about that?
Well, my issue with that is, I don't think that, that there is a complete plan in place. I think there's too much subjectivity involved in the evaluation process. I know that we attended a board class recently, and I think there was a representative regarding the evaluations, the evaluation process there. And I really didn't get the, any answers or the, or if it, if there are any real answers. I'm not sure this has been, I still have too many questions about that, about the whole, the whole, I guess, the standards, the, the evaluation process. I just don't think we have enough information. And like I said, I think there's just still a lot of subjectivity involved.
There's, of course, evaluation going on now, but the, you're, you're right about the performance side of it. Well, okay. And do you have any, you have any particular thoughts about the issues? Can you give us one issue that you're gonna have to deal with right away?
Well, one, unfortunately, one thing we've had is of the...
You gotta name the issue pretty quick. We're running out of time.
Well, you know, the budget and, and the thing, like I've said before, we're gonna have to, to learn to, to manage our, to manage our money and...
Okay. Well, thank you for coming on board. Taking the time to come on board with us, Teresa.
Oh, you're welcome. I enjoyed, I enjoyed being here. Thank you very much.
And good luck. And we'll see you, we'll see you next time, folks. And we'll see you, we'll see you next time, folks.